We'll call the regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners to order. Join me in the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. On our agenda next is the public comments. Anybody that wishes to address the board on a topic that's not listed on our agenda, now's the time to please come forward. State your name, come to the podium, state your name, and please.
I'm Linda Hoffman.
I'm Nicole Taylor.
I'm very nervous, this is the first time I've ever had to do this.
Be at ease, whatever. Thank you. What's your topic?
Well, I am the lost cat and found cat volunteer for Carver County, and I also assist with Scott County and other counties.
I think we got your email.
I'm sure you did.
Yes.
Oh yes, I'm cover all bases, I guess, huh? So, we are here to present actual occurrences that have happened in Carver County in the last year where an animal control location would have come in handy.
For cats.
For cats.
Yep.
Dogs seem to be covered, but not cats.
You're specifically going with cats.
Cats, yep.
Yeah, the dogs are covered for both Carver County and Chaska too.
So, I have a list of seven reasons. I have folders for each of you.
Sure.
That states the actual occurrences that have happened in the last year. I keep track of everything, because I get notified. And I have our proposal, what we feel is needed here. And I can do a quick summary. An animal control location in Carver County or contract with Four Paws, Animal Control in Shakopee, for found cats to be picked up by police or animal control officers, community service officers, and will be safe there while the cat's family is found through networking and social media, which also includes flyers, because some people, like the elderly, they do not have access to social media.
That's correct.
The model for an animal control location will be similar to Four Paws in Shakopee, Bloomington Animal Control, Pups in Maple Grove, Critter-Gettler in Henderson, Minneapolis Animal Control, East Bethel Animal Control, and Dover Kettle Impound Services. And I have more information. I've included a summary in this letter that you all will receive, and I'm shaking.
Just take a deep breath, you're fine, you're doing fine.
Take a breath, you're fine.
And obviously, I've done a lot of research. And I have four pieces of information from four of the, that I mentioned, about their impound fees, what they charge to people who have, you know, their found cats have shown up there, and what they need to pay. And some list if the cost, if the family is not found to the county. And I feel it is extremely needed, because I think every other week lately, I've been notified, I have found a cat, I can't keep it, I don't know where to go. Four, Value Care Vet cannot take them in, they do not have room. They've been directing people to Four Paws. You can't, because we do not have a contract yet. And so, either they get their scramble to find other places to go to, or unfortunately, they let them go.
They let them go. Which in, you know, a couple of cases, well, one case in particular, a lady found a cat, and she was able to catch the cat. And she had possession of the cat, but Value Care Vet couldn't take the cat in for the stray hold, and then, you know, Four Paws obviously wouldn't take the cat. And so, there was no place for this cat to go. And she, and, you know, we know some people who can take the cat in to give us a couple of days to network and see if we can find the family. But she let the, she had to let the cat go, because there was, she couldn't hold the cat, because she had cats of her own. And a couple of days later, she got a call, and the cat was found deceased on the road. And while, you know, there are a lot of stray cats and feral cats out there, there are a lot of cats that are, that go missing. Cats go missing, same with dogs, go missing every single day. And in one case in particular, Linda and I trapped a cat at Willie McCoy's. And we named him Willie McCoy. However, through networking and stuff, we found, we were able to actually find his owner. He had been lost from Eaton Prairie five months earlier, so.
He was found in the middle of December.
Yep, and so, there, you know, there are lots of cats out there that do have families. And a place for the cats to go for the normal, you know, it's a five-day stray hold for a facility. And that gives us time to network the cat and see if there's a family looking for the cat. And it keeps the cat safe during that time.
So, it doesn't become a fatality on the road, which I have picked up about thirty in the last three years.
We appreciate your concern. You can, we can hear your passion. Commissioner Maluchnick has a question.
Mr. Chairman, just some questions. And it's, I don't discount what you're saying, and I actually am very sensitive to what you're saying. The foster pet program here in Carver County, I now have two cats. And I'm not even a cat person. One, we, the owner moved and couldn't keep the cat, so we did a, I forget the term, but we did a six-month temporary placement.
Foster to adopt?
Yeah. Well, we didn't mean to adopt, we did adopt, but we didn't mean to adopt. And then, we adopted one, and both times, we were just going to be foster families. And that's, but now, have you had any success of working with those folks? Some of those folks don't think there should be shelters, that they think they're rather cruel and inhuman because of the way they're structured. And they just rather place the pets with people and families. That always doesn't work, I agree, I mean, I don't disagree. But are you working closely with the Carver County Foster Pets group?
With the Humane Society, they do not take in stray cats.
Yeah, the Humane Society is different than the foster.
The Carver Scott Humane Society, is that who you?
No, there's a foster group. But what I'll do, Mr. Chairman, is if you folks would leave me your contact information,
Absolutely.
we'll get some folks together, and I think, I don't know if we'll ever solve this problem, but we can make some progress.
Well, I'm not going to give up till something happens.
No ma'am, I'm not asking you to give up.
No, no. You know, we contact rescues, and, you know, we ask for help through various rescues. You know, can you take this cat for the stray hold? And everybody's really full. And then, you know, Linda had to drive to the Siamese cat we, she caught a couple of days ago over Lake Grace Apartments. She drove, she had to drive all the way to Golden Valley Humane Society to bring the kitty there, and they only take surrenders by appointment. So, it's a little bit cumbersome, too.
Right.
And it would be, it would be nice to be able to keep kitties kind of in Carver County.
If you can wrap it up, we appreciate.
Yep, no problem, so sorry.
No, don't.
No, we just would like to have an animal control facility for cats, or at least a place for them to be until we can locate a family or find a rescue to take them in for, into a foster situation.
If you could give your information over here to Administrator Hemsey, he will make sure that we all get a copy of that.
Okay, good.
Obviously, the county has zoning authority over the townships and the rural areas. Most of the zoning authority that you're probably speaking of is city. Chanhassen, Chaska, Waconia.
Right.
Yeah, the other, the cities have the major zoning authority, so.
Since I interact with Scott, the Four Paws Animal Control Officer, he's on board with this. And as you can see, there's Critter-Gettler covers the townships for Scott County, so.
Go back to the microphone, just because that's good information, and, you know, that way, the information gets disseminated to anybody listening.
It's on the first letter on the back. If you flip it over, it has my address, email, and phone number. But as I was saying quickly, it's Scott Hooknick. He's the main animal control officer of Four Paws that I interact with. He knows that there's a need for this, he's on board, he wants it to happen. He's willing to work with Carver County, he wants to work with Carver County. Critter-Gettler, they recently took over the townships in the outlined areas of Scott County. So, Four Paws just actually does the cities of Shakopee, Savage, Prior Lake. That's why he would be able to bring that knowledge here to cover the cities. And I bet your Critter-Gettler would be aboard to do the townships.
It's amazing how much we share with that county across the river, so.
Yeah, it's super close.
Exactly.
So many animals could be saved, and, you know, all the dead ones I picked up would not, hopefully would not.
Thank you very much for your information.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Yes.
Hi, Karen Johnson Lightner, 1573538 Street, Mayor Minnesota. I'm not representing any county staff, attorneys, Board of Commissioners, or Hollywood Township Board. I'm a relevant public watchdog. And anyways, driving over here, I have to wear a seatbelt. It's for my safety. Get the seatbelt on. And if I got caught without the seatbelt, the police officer may give me a ticket or warn me that I need to wear a seatbelt. But since November of 1999, I got a tower built next to me, and it got turned on in December of 1999, and I know that that is a health problem. I know it causes many, many situations where people were affected by it. But nobody seems to be like with the seatbelt, I got nobody to talk to about it, and I know things went wrong. So, last, I'm saying, think about seatbelts. That's my big seatbelt unlocked out in Hollywood Township. And we were talking about, if Bill would be able to flip on the picture, we're going to go back to the design of September of 1999. Of all the antennas, Carver County was well aware of. This file was in Steve Just's file. And anyways, Commissioner Ishi, through Chairman Degler, had a conversation. And I said that, in the public comments, that I'm not lying, I'm doing all this stuff. And Commissioner Ishi, I don't know if it was plain sarcastic or whatever it was, but he fully knows that the tower is Hollywood Township. But what he didn't mention is, there's a conditional use permit for that. And I'm not sure if everybody in Carver County and all around the United States of America do not need to do any type of conditional use permit on antennas once they're up, which is crazy, because that's why we have so many problems. But I thought it was very insulting that he brought this up. And the conditional use permit is still in Carver County's file. And Anthony can't be on there anymore. It's time for Anthony and the corporations to get their own towers. And if emergency communication is number one, then just make it number one. But when I was Googling, I ended up going, and I started thinking about Commissioner Ishi. So, I Googled Commissioner Jim Ishi Motorola. Well, he never talks about it, but they're on the Metro Emergency Service Board down in St. Paul, and it's gone on for many years. And Commissioner Gail Degler and Commissioner Jim Ishi are on that board. I'm saying, who all knew about this, and who all didn't talk to Carver County? We knocked them down to ten. The hundred thousand watts is off the air. I want the games to stop out in Hollywood Township within tennis. There should be a stop work order on Anthony's request. And then, another thing he brought up was about the Bernses, and how, once again sarcastic about he, they're not with the Sheriff's Department, they're not with the Attorney's Office, but that's another insulting thing. I never said they were. But the weird part about if he didn't bring up is he is on the Carver County Planning Commission Board. And guess who's on the Planning Commission Board? Jim Burns. And Jim Burns is one of the people that actually put us on felony police reports. And his brother, Steve Burns, and the other person that put us on the police reports, they've been getting a lot of conditional use permits here in Carver County. So, I'm saying that we got to quit the games. And I brought up rural, I've got, I'm pulling all the emails. I think it's when I ticked them off, when I found that one antenna on the radio tower, and I raised a lot of cane about that. I think that's when everybody decided they wanted to do police reports on Karen Anna Lightner. And about the Rural Service for Solar, I don't want, there's eighty-one applications somewhere years ago was set up. They said eighty-one applications would go in Carver County. I want somebody to know where those locations were. When you brought up that the Rural Service District is a location maybe for solar, adult usage, we had packages and everything, which was crazy. But I'm saying that when I was here, in a Rural Service District, Gofa, Gofa, and all of a sudden, they're strapped with a solar field, I'm thinking, you didn't give them enough information, you didn't give them enough time. And I don't know what's going on at Solar right now, but I know that one thing, they're waiting for that Met Council thing to get approved, and you guys didn't look at anything. Stand up for the people. Get your seatbelts on.
Thank you. Anybody else have anything to say this morning? Seeing none, we'll move on with our agenda. We have an agenda add, add to the consent 5.11, 511. So, with that add, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So move, Mr. Chair.
Motion by Commissioner Ishi, seconded by Commissioner Workman, with the add of 511. All in favor of the motion to approve the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number three, the approval of the minutes of the July tenth, 2018 regular session.
Move approval, Mr. Chair.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Lynch, seconded by Commissioner Maluchnick, to approve the minutes. Any discussion? All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Community announcements. Anybody have Commissioner Maluchnick?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to talk about a golf tournament that will be held Thursday, August thirtieth, at Deer Run Golf Course, it'll be a shotgun. It's, I hope folks understand, it'll be sponsored by the organization you work very hard for, the Beyond the Yellow Ribbon of Chaska, and also the Minnesota Assistance Council for Veterans. Carver County is currently home to over forty-five-hundred veterans. We have no place to help transition our homeless veterans back into this community of Carver County. The funds raised will help secure a facility to aid in transitioning our homeless veterans back into the community as self-sustaining citizens. So, if you're interested in that, you can contact the folks at the Beyond the Yellow Ribbon. If you can't find them, contact me, and I'll get you the right people. You can even help them, I know, Mr. Chairman, because of your involvement in that organization. Thank you.
Glad to help, yes. Any other community announcements? Commissioner Lynch?
I could invite everyone up to Rails to Trails this weekend. Friday night, Butch Automatic playing, they've been playing together for over forty years. We've been playing that long together, you're a very good band. And you'll have a big crowd there, and then, Pray will be on Saturday morning.
Remind everybody what city Rails to Trails is in.
Oh, sorry, in Watertown, in beautiful scenic Watertown. Rails to Trails in Watertown this weekend.
Why do they call it Rails to Trails?
Because the loose line rail, rail used to run through town, and it's now the loose line trail.
Very good. Been up to that festival a number of times, it's always a good time by everybody. Other community announcements, Commissioner Maluchnick?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You're going to talk about River City Days?
I was going to mention it, but go ahead.
Then you go ahead, no, no, you do it, Mr. Chairman.
Well, Commissioner Maluchnick mentioned it. River City Days in Chaska here starts this Friday, not this Friday, the twenty-seventh, twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth, and twenty-ninth. You name it, they have it. Fun, anything from car shows to just whatever. They have a lot of entertainment, good time, and hopefully, the weather will cooperate. And even before that, it's getting to that time of the year where Town Ball is kind of wrapping up. They have a lot of festivities at your local ball diamonds. So, no matter if you're in Chanhassen, Chaska, Cologne, Carver, Watertown, Norr Young America, they all have Town Ball. Please join and support your local Town Ball organization.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Maluchnick?
On Friday, the twentieth, this Friday, at seven o'clock, the Chaska Cubs are playing the Shakopee Indians, the old team. And there'll be, that's a dollar entrance fee, and a free brat. So, if people want to show up for that, and I believe I'm cooking the brat, so we'll see if.
Take your chances.
Yeah, I'd say, see, you know, when I was an Army cook, I had a high kill ratio. But we'll see, we'd like to see everybody there.
They call it Dollar Dog Night, but this is Dollar Brat Night.
Dollar Brat Night, yes, sir.
At the Cubs this Friday, the twentieth, so. Anything else? If not, we'll go on with the consent agenda. On the consent agenda, we have eleven different items, anywhere from contracts with the medical examiners to contracts with school resource officers, bridge safety inspections, right-of-ways on a number of projects, replace planner. So, we have a number of different items on the consent agenda. Is there anything that anybody would like to pull? If not, is there a motion to accept the consent as written?
Motion to approve the consent agenda, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Maluchnick, seconded by Commissioner Ishi, to approve the consent. Any discussion? All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Item number six, six point one, the presentation by the local Advisory Committee on Mental Health. Mr. Derek Gunderson is kicking it off. Mr. Gunderson?
Thank you, Chair Degler and Commissioners. Derek Gunderson, I'm the Chair of the Carver County Mental Health Advisory Council, or the Local Advisory Council. I'll use LAC as the acronym. Thank you for the opportunity to address the board this afternoon. I was elected for the, to chair the LAC in February, and I hope to carry on the great progress of previous chairs and continue to lay the groundwork for better mental health services for County Carver residents. I'm here today to give you a brief update of what we've been discussing and working towards in 2018. It's been quite a while since we've been in front of you to give you an update on our activities. Please note, this is not a comprehensive report. It's not a presentation in the traditional sense on our activities. We are in the process right now of planning a listening session at the Carver County Library for September.
Which library branch?
Chanhassen.
Chanhassen, thank you.
We're hoping to draw from a larger community and a larger population base. First Street Center is a great location for us to have our monthly meetings, but not many people in Chan and Chaska are willing to make the drive. So, we're hoping to, if we go to them, we'll draw in more people.
Put in a plug, when is this going to be?
This is September eleventh, from four thirty, excuse me, five-thirty to seven-thirty.
Five-thirty to seven-thirty, September eleventh.
September eleventh. It is our normal Tuesday, our normal first week, or second week, second Tuesday of the month meeting. We've just moved the location, the first hour from four-thirty to five-thirty will be our regularly held.
Good. And the public is invited, so put it on your calendar.
Invited, and I'll go into a little bit more, more into detail about this. So, we'll have, we're hoping to report on that later in September or in October with our comprehensive report. Once we get into November and December, there's not a lot on our docket. Things kind of slow down a little bit. Typical. So, the following are updates and requests from the council. And so, we'll start off, the LAC would like to have Commissioners attend our monthly meeting more regularly than they currently are. And extended, we do extend an invitation to our September listening session, and we'll welcome your participation. Where, and all remarks, any and all remarks, we record it as anonymously, so that the general public feels more comfortable sharing their experiences with Carver County. And this doesn't mean we want to see you all at every meeting, or one person assigned to every meeting. But if you're able to make it to a meeting even for an hour, once every couple of months, it'd be great. The council, the council would love to have you and hear your opinion on services in Carver County.
I'll have to admit, you have a member of your committee that regularly keeps asking me, and I keep telling her that, I'm sorry, I'd love to be there, but I do have a conflict on that second Tuesday with other meetings.
So, but.
You got to give her kudos, she is very persistent.
It's always an open invitation, even if you have questions about anything that you hear or read coming from the council, we'd love the feedback.
Thanks for the invitation.
As you know, we sent a letter of support for the Stabilization Center at the end of last year, and our support is unwavering. The LAC would like an update on the center's programming progress to date, so that we have the most current information. We need to be prepared when we're speaking with residents about the center. So, if there's any updates or things that we haven't been able to read in local papers, or things that we just, that are new developing, please keep us informed. It's something that the council's pretty passionate about. The next would be, the next item would be transportation. Transportation has been identified as one of the many areas for improvement for those facing mental health issues, specifically access to affordable transportation. Oftentimes, those battling some type of diagnosis do not own their own vehicle and are reliant oftentimes on family, public, or for-profit modes of transportation. With limited public offerings in Carver County, family and for-profit transportation add additional barriers and expense to those seeking mental health services. One example, the WeCAB program is one example of a success story that, as it continues to grow, that is helping Carver County residents overcome the transportation barrier. However, transportation remains an area for improvement. Aside from our efforts with the Stabilization Center, a lack of beds for short-term help remains an issue. This is a statewide issue, however, it does affect Carver County residents. We are looking into solutions, possible solutions for this. But the transitions and beds is something that we talk about a lot, and it's a statewide issue. Every day, you're seeing something about a shortage of beds for mental health issues. Whether it's county inmates in Hennepin County, or juveniles up in Anoka County, there's something going on everywhere. Affordable housing is another thing that gets talked about. For those with a mental health diagnosis, we are looking for more input in September from residents, what those solutions to that problem looks like. Anytime anybody hears affordable housing, they cringe a little bit, but it's something that needs to be addressed. These are just a few points that have been discussed. As I mentioned, the LAC will have more comprehensive analysis with recommendations later in the fall. But as I have said before, budgets are about priorities. So, as you begin your budget, preliminary budgetary talks, the LAC and Carver County residents believe mental health services to be a priority. As you begin the budget process, please make mental health a priority. Again, thank you for allowing me to get up and speak in front of you today. And if you have questions about anything that we've, that we go over, I can't answer everything, but I can do my best.
Thanks for the invitation. Commissioner Workman?
Well, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Mr. Gunderson. I, this issue is a quickly growing issue, I would say, in the eyes of your county board. Second Tuesday? Was that nine eleven, or September eleventh?
September eleventh, so our first, the meeting that you'd be invited to is our regular meeting. Anybody's invited to a regular meeting, but our regular meeting goes from, is normally four to six. But to kind of juggle the library schedule and our schedule with our two-hour listening session, we're four-thirty to five-thirty for regular business, five-thirty to seven-thirty for public input.
And we can talk about that. I too have often thought that it would be a good idea, excuse me, to get over there. But, you know, we just had an incident with our sheriff's deputies up in Chanhassen. I will certainly be waiting for the BCA and others to come out before I make any judgments on anything. But we sort of got, got the idea, at least from the news sources, about some mental health issues and other things going on. The mental health facility, I guess, are we calling that the Stabilization Center? Is that what we're calling that? And many others relating to autism, and bipolar, and all sorts of different things. And so, I don't know, in my long political career, when I've maybe been confronted by these issues so much. And so, I think, again, I had a long conversation with a former legislator friend of mine from Texas today, who lost a son in a similar incident out in Washington, state of Washington. And I've talked about that before. But he explained to me some things that are going on at the Capitol, and things that should perhaps be going on, and some that shouldn't. And I'd like to talk to you guys, and I'll be talking to the board and our staff about a lot of those issues, about where, where we're going and whether or not we are handling these issues properly. about where, where, where we're going and, and whether or not we are handling these issues properly. I think there's a debate about, about economics relating to a lot of this. And I think we should quickly try to get to the bottom of it if we can. I think, I think Carver County is doing a good job so far. And I think there's some things we can, again, I was on the phone for an hour today, so this, this just sort of keeps coming back. And so I hope to spend a little more time with you folks on that.
And it's my, it's my personal opinion that as long as we stay ahead of the curve or try to stay ahead of the curve, to keep putting it out there to say that we're trying to do things is better than having too many, having to put a fire out issues. So that's, that's kind of why we're, that's, we've been too long in between visits for us coming in front of you guys. So we, that's why we've also invited you, because we want to make sure that we're, we're able to get ahead of the curve as much as possible. And you can't foresee everything, but as long as we're having open dialogue and open conversations with residents, the committee and you guys, I think it's, it's a great, it'll be, it just helps us that much more.
Commissioner Maluchnick.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And Commissioner Degler stated that he had a conflict, I believe that's CAP. And, you know, CAP helps a great many people that are below the poverty level here in Carver County. Some think that we don't have anybody in that situation, but we have almost twelve thousand people in Carver County suffering from, uh, living below the economic level that one should here or could in Carver County successfully. And a great many of those, mental health is an issue. I'd also like to thank you, Mr. Gunderson, for your leadership on this committee. I appreciate what you do and what you've done in, in the past. And I want, would ask you, and I'll do it when I attend, please express our appreciation for the whole Board, and I'm sure the Commissioner would, or the Chairman would agree, for the work of your, your committee. So you brought up the, and I'd like to also thank Commissioner Lynch for his liaison work and leadership with that mental health committee. You brought up transportation. I just returned from NACO, our National Organization for County Commissioners. Yesterday, I was appointed to the top spot in transportation. Rural transit is a big issue, and I think that's what you were talking about. Getting people to medical appointments is important. Getting people to access to food is another issue, and that also can be a mental health issue. So I think the Board is aware of those issues. And it's always a matter about budget and setting priorities. But as Commissioner Workman suggested, that this is an issue we have to, to probably take a better handle on. Because if you don't front load this problem, the backside is a lot more expensive. So I think we have to figure out how to do this better than we're doing it. And I guess what I'd like to say is we're transitioning from a smaller county to greater population, and there's going to be growing pains. And I think that's, in this particular area, that's where we're having some growing pains. But again, I appreciate you being here and giving this report. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, thank you very much for your work. And a personal question, you're not a doctor by any chance, are you?
No.
There's a Gunderson Clinic down in La Crosse, Wisconsin. I used to teach in southeastern Minnesota, that just stuck in my mind.
About, all I can say there is I went to Winona State, I am, but I end O-N, and it's E-N.
Oh, okay.
So.
My spelling is horrendous, so either way. So thank you very much for your work. And thanks for the report. Don't hesitate to come and join us again.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Seeing that, our agenda takes us to seven point one, enter into a closed session. So we will need a, a motion to go into closed session to discuss pending litigation under the attorney-client priv, privilege.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Maluchnick, second by Commissioner Lynch. That's under statute, what is it? Thirteen D point oh five subsection three D, three B, I should say. Any other discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor of the motion to go into closed session, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We will be in closed session. Did I butcher that good enough?
It's good.